Huh? Yeah, you got to be in the mouth.
Paulette Walker?
Here.
Gary Schrader?
Here.
Evelyn Cunningham?
Here.
We have four.
Any deletions or withdrawals and continuances?
None.
Public comments?
None.
None.
Approval for the last meeting, I'm supposed to say.
Make a motion.
To approve?
Approval of the previous minutes? Somebody make a...
I know you would turn to me.
Somebody make any, uh, motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the last meeting, which was in September.
Your second.
You need a second?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, so motion made by Paulette Walker, seconded by Evelyn Cunningham.
Thank you.
Uh, Gary Schrader?
Yes.
Evelyn Cunningham?
Yes.
Paulette Walker?
Yes.
And passes.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
What?
Would you like me to introduce the next items, Mr. Schrader? Thank you. Um, so the next items on your agenda are, uh, under six, applications and public hearings. There's two, uh, 23 SP dash zero four. This is for Public Storage Four Limited, Bowler Engineering, Florida. The address is thirty eighty Pembroke Road. This is for site plan approval for a new five-story, two, uh, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, uh, sorry, two-hundred-and, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-seven-hundred-seventy-five gross square feet of self-storage with accessory office. Also with that is item six point two, twenty-three dash PR dash O-two. Same location, same project for parking reduction approval. To reduce the parking from three fifty-two, uh, parking spaces down to twenty-nine parking spaces to construct a new self-storage facility. Um, if anyone who's going to be giving any testimony on these items, uh, please stand to be sworn in at this time. Do you swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, it appears that, uh, just for the record, we don't have, uh, any members of the public. I believe this is your whole team, uh, Mr. Adler? Okay, for Mr. Adler. Um, the city has a, the town has a presentation, Mr. Adler has a presentation. Uh, we are going to have, uh, with the board's permission, uh, one, you know, joint presentations on both items. When you open up the public hearing, uh, I'm going to indicate now, again, although the room's empty, uh, for, it would be for the public hearing as to both items. But for your recommendation to the town commission, it would be two separate motions, uh, for each recommendation for each item moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So you're talking, um, seven point one and seven point two?
Okay. Okay, mine says six, so I guess I have an older agenda.
You were reading so fast, so.
And when we make a motion, it'll be for both?
No, wait, no, you know, we're basically going to, one public hearing, one presentation for both items. And I'll help you through as far as making sure that the records reflect. But it, the final recommendation, the final vote, each item must be taken separately.
Okay, got you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Schrader?
When we get started, what, what is this, uh, storage, storage place?
Yes, it, it's, it's a five-story, uh, self-storage building. Um, both the town and the respondent have, have presentations, uh, for you. And then also, so it's going to be for the site plan, uh, recommendation to this, to the town commission for the self-storage facility. And as well as their parking reduction, uh, request.
So, what is there now?
Well, i- i- if, uh, Mr. Schrader, I think, um, a lot of your questions might be answered. I think that would be the appropriate time to turn it over to Mr. Von, Von der Mullen for his presentation, followed by the, uh, the applicant.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning and zoning board. My name is Mike Von der Mullen with Keith. We are your consultant town planner. Tonight, we'll go ahead and in, as, as the attorney has, uh, mentioned, we are going to make one presentation for two applications. Now, the applic, these, both these applications are on the same piece of property and for the same project. So, uh, we'll go ahead and go to the next one. So the two requests, one is site plan approval. They're going to demolish the existing five buildings that are there. This site is located at pretty much I ninety-five and Pembroke Road. It is the public storage right there on the corner. So, right, essentially right next to the railroad tracks, probably, probably easier, uh, described. Next to the railroad tracks.
Be on the left or the right as you're going down.
As you're going down Pembroke Road, it would be on the left.
Yes, on the left.
Cause Orange Brook, Orange Brook is the...
Corner, kitty corner.
Yes, yes.
So, is it that right by the racetrack gas station that you make a little turn and you see that storage place there, or it's not?
Uh, no, no, this would be farther east, closer to the ninety-five.
Closer to the ninety-five, okay.
Yeah.
A- a- and you said there's already one there now?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, I will go ahead and, uh, you've heard the request, so the, the next one is the location map. So this'll, this'll be much better. So you can see the, um, uh, CSX Railway Station, um, there on the far right, as well as the on-ramp, the I ninety-five. These are the, uh, five one-story warehouse buildings that are there now. Um, and Public Storage does have another building in, in the town, but this is, this is one of their older ones that they're going to go ahead and demolish these five buildings. And, uh, it, it's, this is, uh, in the manufacturing or industrial zone. And it's about two, two and a half acres, just a shy of two and a half acres. Could you go to the next slide? So, this is the, uh, new proposed site plan. This now will be a five-story building. Uh, it'll be self-storage, it'll be a modern self-storage building. We have a rendering right towards the end. Uh, you come in off of, um, oh, I'm sorry, the cross street there. Thirty-first, I'm sorry. Uh, Thirty-first Avenue, uh, just off of Pembroke Road. Uh, you'll come in, there'll be some parking, um, along the roadway that you can see there. It's all off-street, so it's on the property itself. That will be open to the public. And then the rest of the site will be essentially fenced in and secured. So when you're going in and out of the self-storage building, you're, you're in a secured location. And that, uh, there is a roadway that essentially traverses all the way around the building. And then as well as all of the, uh, the roadway and the parking, then you also have landscaping on all four sides of the building. So, along with this is a, is a, a request for a parking reduction. And it looks, it looks fairly large, but that, I think it's because, uh, the town's code does, really does not address self-storage facilities. You know, we warehouses and industrial buildings are so much different than self-storage. Self-storage, you know, you're not there all the time. Uh, you know, you, you go and occasionally pick up your stuff, either on holidays or, or when you need it. Um, so that the traffic being generated by these buildings and the parking, uh, generated by these buildings is extremely, uh, small. So, the, the co, the code just hasn't been updated and, uh, hasn't addressed self-storage buildings. Now, there are self-storage buildings in this, in the town, and most of them have come to this board to request parking reductions. So we'll give you, uh, an example. Um, ITE, which is the Institute of Tre, uh, Transportation Engineers. They, they study self-storage facilities all over the country. And they have a generation rate that is approximately a le, uh, one parking space for eleven thousand square feet. That's compared to the town's one parking space for every six hundred square feet. So, huge, huge difference. If, if we had instituted the ITE requirement, uh, you would have the, 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 this site plan and this project would only require nineteen spaces. Now, we also have, uh, a, a self-storage facility on JP Lyons. And that self-storage facility right now has, uh, parking around six thousand seven hundred square feet. And it has twenty-five spaces for, for the size building that it has. And then we also have another one, Seneca, or the Extra Storage, right here on Hallendale Beach Boulevard. Uh, next...
That's a huge one.
Yeah, the huge one, next to, uh...
The one going east from there?
Near Wawa, yeah, east, going east of here. Correct, yes. So that one, um, has, uh, another facility in that one, um, is, is a six, I mean, six, excuse me, six thousand square feet. The other one was eight thousand square feet. This, this proposed building, the public storage, eh, the, the parking space per thousands of square feet is right in between the two. So it's, it's very compatible with the self-storage facilities that the town has already approved i- in the past.
Which is how many?
Uh, so it'll be twenty-nine spaces total. And again, uh, I'm sure the, the applicant explained it a little bit further. Some of those will be right there at the leasing office for new folks coming in. The other ones are going to be behind a gate and a fence so that it's secure as you're going in and out of, of the building. And, uh, this is the rendering. Uh, this is the, what you'll see from the corner of Pembroke Road and Southwest Thirty-first Avenue. You can see, it's, it's not just a big block building, you, you have glass. You'll be able to see the, uh, the, the storage units or the doors of the storage units, uh, behind the glass. It gives you, you know, gives you some nice light into the building. It's, uh, it's, it's a real nice, uh, professional touch, very typical of, of these buildings. Adding a little bit of, of interest and articulation. You can see the banding along the roof and then the first floor, uh, being a different color so that there is some articulation, uh, in, in pronunciation to the building. So with that, you know, uh, the city reviewed it through the DRC, so, um, you know, police, fire, uh, town engineer, city engineer, they've all reviewed it, all recommended approval. Uh, and, uh, so the, the planning, uh, the staff also recommends approval. And then based on, uh, the analysis for the parking reduction, and this one being right in the middle of two other existing, um, self-storage facilities, we also recommend approval of the...
What, what's up with that?
How many parking reduction?
That's hot now? There's one on every street corner.
Yeah, so...
Seven-eleven.
It's, um, it, it, it is very interesting. Uh, there, I guess there's, there's been market studies done. We, we have worked and reviewed other, other projects in the past. And, uh, there is, there is such a demand for these kind of storage spaces. And I think it's because a lot of the newer buildings and apartments and condominiums are so much smaller. You don't have space, you have space for your car, but you don't have anything, room or anything else. So, so, you know, it, it lends itself to this high demand for, for self-storage facilities.
Now, is there a limit on, on how many the town would allow in their town?
Yes, so, uh, each town is doing that. I can let you know right now that the, uh, city, the town commission actually has recommended that we do a moratorium. So after this one, uh, there'll be, there'll be a, a moratorium for six months for us to analyze. Are, i- i- are there enough, are there too many? We can also adjust the parking so that these applications don't always come, the parking reduction applications don't come to you. So we'll, we'll be standardize, standardizing those requirements, making sure that they're in the proper location. Making sure that you have articulation on a building that you're just not going to get a big box. Um, so those are, those are the things that we're going to be looking at over the next six months and presenting a, an ordinance, which will actually come to you first. And then, uh, to the town commission afterwards.
Okay. Cause it's really just an upgrade, actually, to say.
This really is, yes.
If I may?
Yep.
And if you don't mind, I'm just going to move this a little over so I'm not towering over, over.
Careful, 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 careful? Yeah.
But we want you on camera, though.
Will I still be on camera from here?
Kind of turned back a bit.
And I'll, I'll put my things here, so.
Good evening and, and, um, thank you all for attending this evening. I know it's, uh, been a busy week. Uh, for the record, my name is Brian Adler with Law Offices at Bilsen-Sunberg, fourteen fifty Brickell Avenue, Suite twenty-three hundred. I am joined this evening by Patrick Hart, the development manager from Public Storage, who flew in today to be here this, uh, evening with you for the hearing. And with Brett Goldstein, who is, uh, with the en, is the engineer from Bowler Engineering. We are here on behalf of Public Storage, which is not only a, the applicant, but they are the owner of the property. So there's, and they have owned the property since nineteen seventy-eight. So many new applications are, are, are processed or being built in anticipation of acquiring property. But this is an existing facility, which as you noted, this is actually an upgrade of an existing facility. So I'm, I'm going to address kind of a lot of the questions that, that were raised this evening, and I think to give you a little bit more of a comfort level. Um, I may repeat just some of the items, but if you can go to the next slide. This is an industrial area. The property is designated industrial, it is zoned industrial. Um, it is on the corner ninety-five, adjacent to the railroad, um, and Pembroke Road. So if you're heading west, it's on your left. If you're heading east, it's on your right-hand side. There is an existing self-storage facility that is there. Um, if we can, um, if we can just go to the next slide. So, this is where it's located, which kind of details it. And the M-one is your industrial district. So you can see that we are surrounded by other M-one industrial uses. So where does a self-storage facility go? And it can go in many different places, but this is a zone that actually permits self-storage as a use, as a matter of right. It's a permitted use. It's not a special exception that requires other items, but it's a permitted use in the district. The town code says if you've got whatever use you're coming forward with, we do have to come before, before the town for approval. Uh, but we also are seeking a parking reduction, so we'd be at the hearing either way. So it was built in nineteen seventy-eight, and it's the old, what we call the roll-up garage door style. But if you go by the, the existing facility, if you see the wall, the back of, there's, the buildings actually lie in the perimeter of the site. So they're really not set back. You see really no landscaping on the side of, of, of the street. Those are all up against, up against the, the wall. That's just how they were built, industrial at the time and very industrial-looking. What this is doing is centralizing, and so you brought up how many of these do we need, et cetera. This one's a little bit different for two reasons. Number one, we're not, there's different ways that you look at self-storage. There's fifty-something thousand square feet there right now. We're increasing it to just over two-hundred-thousand square feet, but we're not doing it by utilizing any other land in the town. It's already existing land that is zoned for self-storage, that has an existing self-storage. So it's replacing, as you said, upgrading, both from a aesthetic standpoint, but also this is a fifth-generation climate-controlled self-storage, which is, there's not that many of them as much around. There's a lot of the, so this is an upgrade to the self-storage that, that's there right now. Um, Public Storage acquired the property in nineteen seventy-eight. Public Storage acquired the property in 1978. This was built in 1979, so this is 45 years old. This is an opportunity to take down some of the antiquated garage door style and put up a modern building. And what you saw is, there's, there's actually seven buildings that are lining, because it's hard to see because some of them just like, look like the wall. Those are actually storage buildings. The new site plan is gonna, it, it meets the requirements. We're doing a 210,000 square foot, but a 42,000 square foot foot plate. Right now, you have over 50-something thousand square feet, so your, your ground floor foot plate, plate is much larger than what we're coming in with, which is a 42,000, but we're going vertical. But by doing that, we're centralizing the, the building onto the site. So instead of being zero setback, because if you drive up 31st Avenue, it's actually the back of the building that is creating the wall, you're putting it more center. You're doing the glass facade that, that Mr. Vander Mullen had described, and you're also essentially, um, those seven buildings have numerous different drive aisles. That, that old style creates pedestrian and vehicular conflicts much more because you've got cars traversing around the whole site, whereas you have now one building and, and more of a, of a better entrance that is there. So we're upgrading and modernizing it. It is permitted to go, um, we're going at five stories, about 53 feet. The district allows 80 feet as of right or 100 feet with approval, um, by the commission. So everything is, is essentially complying with the exception of the parking. So we have two requests for you this evening. One is site, site plan approval, everything that comes before you, and another is a parking reduction, which in your minutes you'll see you actually had a parking reduction, uh, last, uh, last month. If we can go to the next slide. Okay, so what we're seeking is a parking reduction. Now, there is a specific code section, so, and I want to differentiate. There's, there are variances which are seeking things like if we wanted to setback five feet instead of 10 feet. Right now, the, we, the, the site does not meet the current requirements for setbacks. May have at the time, but the, the code is, so this is also a way of bringing the site current to the count, to the town's code. With regard to parking reductions, uh, this is not a variance. The code, as, as Mr. Vander Mullen detailed, treats all industrial the same. So whether this was a 210,000 square foot Amazon logistics facility or a self-storage facility, the parking is one per 600. Office use is one per 300 in the town, so we're actually required to have twice as many parking spaces as if we were a five-story, fully occupied office building. But in recognition of that, the town code says, hey, we have this section that says we recognize that these are, that not one size fits all as it relates to parking, so you can come in for a parking reduction if you meet the criteria. So if we can go to the next slide, oh, go back. This is where you see there's, these are the categories of parking in the town. Number nine is industrial. And again, whether we're a manufacturing facility, a warehouse facility, an Amazon logistics facility, we all fall under that industrial. If you can go to the next slide. Section 28, 301.2 is entitled Parking Reduction and sets forth a process for which we can seek a reduction, uh, and that's the process we're coming for before you today. So again, this is not a variance. This is actually contemplated by the code. And it goes through, okay, if you can go back, a few different requirements. One is concurrency, whether we're gonna, uh, whether it's going to degrade the, the, the town's roads, uh, traffic on the roads. It has been evaluated by your town's outside consultants and engineers, and they've determined no, it will not. Again, the I T E manual, we're one of the lowest parking generators in the manual of any use that there is. The second is that, um, that the use supports a parking reduction. So if we were seeking, uh, under your code today, we would be required to have 352 parking spaces. So imagine an entire field that would be needed to park all the cars that would be required under the code would not be a good utilization of the town's property, or we'd have to build a seven-story parking garage for a five-story, uh, facility, you know, uh, storage facility. And the third one is that it, there's going to be enough to meet the needs of the, of the use. So, um, our traffic study and traffic analysis was submitted. Uh, the I T manual says something of our size needs 19 spaces. We're providing more than 50% over what's required, what would be needed under the I T. We're providing 29, which is more than is anticipated under the code. Um, and that's just to give a cushion and a comfort level to say, wait, that looks like a big number, but 29 is going to be far in excess of really of what we need and, and, and basically 50% more than the I T E. Most jurisdictions in their code differentiate between self-storage versus other industrial uses in recognition of that and in recognition of the I T. The town's code doesn't necessarily differentiate, as your staff noted. However, it does give us this process to go through. So as an example, Miami-Dade County, if we can go to the next slide, and many jurisdictions, they have a provision that looks like this. The town's is one per 600. In Miami-Dade County, they say, okay, for your first 20,000, we need one per 5,000, because there's some minimum number that you're going to need, but after that, it's one per 10,000. So if we were using Miami-Dade County's code, it would require 25 spaces. We're coming in with 29, and that 25, the I T manual says is, they came up with higher than would be anticipated, just as that cushion like, that, that we're seeking. And if you can go to the next slide. So this is from our traffic study and the traffic demand. The yellow circle, the 19, is what would be required under the I T E. And again, that's the international, um, that's the, um, uh, Institute of Traffic Engineers, based on studies of, you know, thousands of these facilities. The green is what we're providing. The 25 is the middle column. That's what's, uh, at the John Lyons, and Seneca has 36, but that's also part of a, uh, more of a larger, with A Wawa and others, so there may be overflow that, you know, so there, that, that's basically parking for the entire site. Uh, there's additional parking, but that's parking, there's overflow that might be able to be used. One other thing to note, and which is beneficial for the town, um, with regard to our, our project, um, F D O T has been in the process of studying and essentially is proposing uh, improvements to I-95 from county line, because Miami-Dade County has a different F D O T district. They're District Six, District Four governs here, up to Hollywood. But if you look at the yellow, that's actually extending onto the roads because they're not just doing upgrades to the property, to the I-95, but access and entrance ramps. The red is in front of our property. Right now, we have two entrances on, an entrance and exit, and I think an entrance on, there's two dr- uh, curb cuts on Pembroke. If we don't develop this and F D O T comes in, they may have to take our, take our entrance because we can't put new entrances there. They may, they may end up taking it, uh, but this is a way of avoiding all that, and we're relocating our entrances on 31st Avenue. That is not complete yet. We have nothing to do with that process, but in anticipation that, that may go forward, there's another hearing that's going to be in the spring of 2025. We have designed around that to, to, um, to address that, and so our entrances are on 31st Avenue. And if you can go to the next slide. Your staff's recommendation details many of the things that I'm saying. One is low usage rate, et cetera, that office would require one per 300, where one per, ours would require one per 600. Next slide. And again, how that this would not create, uh, an issue on traffic with the town. Uh, can you go to the next slide? So again, we have buildings all across the perimeter. We have numerous drive aisles, the old, um, you know, not heated, not climate-controlled, um, you know, garage roll-up, and replacing it with a more centralized building, still through, you know, still 30 feet almost lower than could be permitted as of right. And then more landscaping, if, if we can, if we can go to the next slide. And then I actually want to go to, and I apologize, but, um, can you go to one of the slides, one of the last slides that you had in the original, in the, in the staff presentation? Because one of the things is, as I mentioned, our perimeter of our site is, is essentially a wall on 31st Avenue, not, not as, you know, the requirements were different back then. This is not only going to be an upgrade to the facility and structure itself, but it's going to be a aesthetic upgrade to the roads and the street.
All right, which one?
Uh, the Keith, the Keith, uh, yeah. And I apologize, but I think this'll, this, uh, I'm going to steal from their presentation. Oh, if, go back to the first, if you go back and then I'll, I'll advance forward. Okay, so if you can see. On the south, I don't want to speak none of the mic, but those are buildings that are lining the roads. That bottom building, that bottom area is actually a building that's pushed up against the back, so there's essentially zero setback on three sides of, of the property. If you can scroll down again, Susie. There. As you can see, Pembroke Road is now going to be defined with landscaping and trees, and 31st Avenue is going to be designed with landscaping and trees. So what this is, 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 as you noted, it's an upgrade. It's an aesthetic upgrade. It's a functional upgrade. It's a product upgrade, um, and it's increasing capacity to meet the needs because there, you're asking how many facilities do we need everywhere? This is everywhere because housing has gotten very expensive. The cost of constructing new housing has gotten very expensive. Housing units are getting smaller, and people have, are utilizing this, and there, a lot do not have garages. This is a way of providing and increasing capacity. We're taking a 55,000 square foot type of, 53,000 square foot facility, putting 210,000 square feet in a nicer product and not using any additional town land in order to do that, but meeting the needs of the town. So with that, we, we respectfully request your recommendation of approval. I do have two housekeeping items, if I may, as it relates to the recommendation. There was an updated recommendation that, um, that we have. So your recommendation included two conditions, uh, in, in each of the recommendations. On the October 3rd, one, that is for site plan development, and this is from, from Keith, um, this is the email, um, where they've emailed this evening. They've also sent it to the clerk, so it's part of the record. What they've said is, um, new condition of approval. Am I in the October? So what they've said is, old condition of approval, and the last line was, if the use continues for a period of more than 90 days, this approval shall be null and void. That has been eliminated, and the, uh, from both of them. And the second one was, if a complaint is filed by an aggrieved party negatively impacts the parking reduction, the town commission may elect to hold a public hearing. So we've spoken with staff. This is, um, and this has been also removed, uh, for reasons that we've discussed with them. You would never get financing, you'd never get a seller, you'd never, you know, with those conditions, if it could be revoked, because then it would be up, you have to, you build this big building and you have to put three on your 52 parking spaces. You have code enforcement and other things that deal with that. That's, so that's a condition that's been removed from the recommendation. So what we're asking for is your recommendation of approval with the conditions as modified by staff. And with that, I'm here for, for questions, um, and to address any concerns that you...
Current site still operational?
It is.
So what happens, you bowl those all place, or?
Yes, the entire site will be taken down and repl- so, so the, the, what you saw in the pictures, the old roll-ups will all be demolished, and they will have to be repl- and it will be replaced with an, with a new facility.
So people will eventually leave? They get, they're told that you got X amount of time to go and...
Generally, and they have another facility that they're, they have several other facilities as well, so there may be an option for them to go to other facilities and, that's something. But yes, uh, people would have, it's, it's part of upgrading, but then I'm sure everyone will be happy to come back to a, to a, uh, climate-controlled one.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
Okay. I have some question. When it comes to the parking reduction, does, the parking reduction is on an overall basics for everyone, like employer and customers?
So generally, these type of facilities don't have many employees, um, and, but it would be an overall to provide 29. So the, the anticipated number that would be needed under the I T E of 19 includes employees, customers, visitors, et cetera. So, and what we're providing is 29, which would also be for everyone. So what we're providing is, is essentially just over 50% more than would be required by the I T E manual.
Okay, that's all good and well, but, um, when you're talking about storage, do you guys take into consideration people coming to drop off their stuff? Is the space wide enough for them? Is there going to be like space, right, correct?
And, and the space here is mu- if you look at the original and the current conditions, the, it is much better, uh, better circulation and more, and, yes, and, and spaces.
Yeah, because we don't want nobody bumping into people with their furniture or whatever they have been stored or stuff like that.
Yeah, these are actually much, uh, public storage operates all over the, over the country, and so the number, they don't want to create a facility that doesn't have enough parking for their customers, because then they don't get new customers, so, but they also look at everyone in, in upgrading. If you look at the, if you go by the current site, it's a, it's a great site, it's a good property, but this is an upgrade over that, and, and the older style just, it's, it is a safer condition, so.
Okay, so the space is good and available. Okay, will these, will it be affordable? I mean, you know, everything is going up and stuff like that, and if you have a home that you pay in rent or mortgage and to pay for storage, will it be affordable, or you can't answer that yet?
Uh, so I don't know the cost of them, but there is a market and there is competition. And so, and this is an upgraded facility, so, you know, climate control is generally likely more than the roll-up, but there is a market that, that does put a check on that, so.
And because, and because there's three or four more of them right on each corner of that, then, you know, you can also go by that too, right?
Correct.
Keep going.
No, I don't.
You've got a lot of this there.
No, it is all, it's all in one.
Oh, okay.
And I'm just, I mean, concerned about, you know, people coming in and bumping into these people, and, you know, most people don't drive well, and...
Well, they ain't gonna do that anyway.
Yes.
That's Florida.
And yes, I have another one. Based on a few storage that I've known about, and, I mean, is whatever the, any individual is storing, is it safe? Because most time people leave their stuff there for a while, and when they go back, there's nothing there.
When you say there's nothing there, you mean it's...
Like all their furnitures are gone, or some of their furnitures or whatever they have in there is not there.
So this is a, this, in the, I would, I would anticipate that the roll-up style are much, they're external, and so there's much less, um, um, uh, there's much more access, you know, than there would be. This is going to be gated, but also it's a building, so the storage is all internal, so it's not, it's not like somebody could pull up and open a, you know, open the door and, and take this, and take the, uh, take the belongings from in there. So this is a much more secure type of building. Um, I'm going to assume there's cameras and, et cetera.
But most people think that it's coming from within, not somebody driving up and taking people's stuff. Like if they say...
Don't most of, I, from what I've seen, I've visited, I've just taken a friend, but cameras and also security. He had to actually have a code to go in, because it's a newer, it wasn't one of the old ones like this one, so I've, I've been to a newer version of it, where they do have security to go in as well, and cameras are everywhere. Yeah.
And public stores, again, they operate all over the country. They're a public company. They're vested in good reputation, security, safety, um, and having people come back, so...
Okay. Well, I think things and times have changed and they upgrade their system, but maybe like in the past, they have this storage that people, when they go back, their stuff is not there. So as you said, it's secure, it's going to be gated and stuff like that, so.
And to be honest, stuff is everywhere, so is that me, you?
No, but it's hard to be paying every month and have your stuff, it's expensive, and people, you can't find it, so it's hard. Okay.
So with your upgrade, things will even be more secure?
Yes.
That's all, okay.
She gonna catch you if you don't talk in that mic, sir. Yeah.
How you put her on my neck?
Okay, so what's your next step? Mr. Chair, if I may, if, uh, there's no, if there's no additional questions from the board, uh, now would be the proper time to open both 23 S P 04 and 23 P R 02, um, for any additional public comment. And I will note that the room, but for the applicant's team is empty, but we still, for the record, which is also why I put all this on the record, uh, because when you're reading it on a transcript, you can't tell if the room's full or the room, other rooms not. So although we are, we do have video, but, um, if you can open the public hearing, if there's any other public comment, if not, close the public hearing.
I'm opening, uh, for any public, public comment? No?
Right, just close, please close the public hearing, uh, Mr. Chair.
Close for public hearing.
And then if there's no, um, um, final, uh, closing argument or final statement from either the city or, or the applicant, now would be the proper time, uh, to, if there's any additional questions from the board, if not, you can call for a vote. If... If I may, again, remind the board that each item would need a separate motion. It would be with the conditions as modified by staff. If I may, through the chair, ask the applicant if they agree to the conditions. Through the chair, if I may, the applicant, the conditions as modified.
As modified, yeah.
Okay, as modified and as a binding for... On the application.
Yes.
Thank you. So with that, it would be a motion...
So that would be motion one that's yellowed.
That's correct.
Correct.
You... We provided a motion guide for you.
Yes, I see that. I see that.
And we had highlighted the one that was the actual staff recommendation. So, you know, if you agree with staff and the applicant, we would go ahead and recommend that you make a motion with the highlighted one. The first one will be the site plan, and then there'll actually need to be a second one for the parking reduction.
Okay, so you said everything has been gone through, and with... I lost my bearing. With the thing to like, if any additional plans to be made, it's made provision in the... Whatever you're doing?
I'm sorry, if you can just clarify.
Okay. The last part that you read, that there's something in the plan that you have that if need to be...
Oh, those are the condition. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, go... Say what you're saying.
Oh, there were two... What I was doing is, there were two conditions that were from a prior recommendation, that there's an updated recommendation. And so that's the clarification, so it hasn't amended.
And that's built into this first motion.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay. So we're ready.
You've gotta do your work. I can't make a motion.
Yes. I make a motion that the board find the competent substantial evidence that has been presented to us by the applicants and recommend that the town commission approve the site plan along with the condition of staff as present in the staff report.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. And for the record, this is on item 23-SP-04 for the site plan. Mr. Chair.
Do we have to say that?
It just helps clarify for the motion, for the record, that we're taking them separately. I know I'm not as articulate or good-looking as Mr. Horowitz, but this is where, as far as a lot of the meetings, I like to keep the record as clear as possible.
So we need to add those words to that.
No, no, no. For right now, we're good. You have a motion. You have a valid motion on the floor that needs a second.
I second it.
Okay, and then...
Roll call.
Motion made by Paulette Walker, seconded by Evelyn Cunningham. Evelyn?
Yes.
Paulette Walker?
Yes.
And Gary Schrader.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, Mr. Chair, if you can call for a motion on 23-PR 02. Again, it's the Public Storage, same location. This is for the parking reduction.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll do it. I make a motion that the board find the competent substantial evidence as been presented by the applicants and recommend to the town commission approval the site plan along with the condition of the staff as present in the staff reporting.
As amended.
Item 7.1, 23.SP 04.
Thank you. As amended. The conditions as amended. Thank you.
I second it.
Roll call.
Motion first.
Please call. Call the vote.
Motion made by Paulette Walker, seconded by Evelyn Cunningham. Paulette Walker?
Yes.
Gary Schrader?
Yes.
Yes. Is that a yes? I'm sorry. Yes.
Motion passes.
And as previously stated, this was for the parking, the other... Just a quick clarification with 7.2, not 7.1. But the motion was still there, and again, that's why I clarified at the beginning. So both motions before the board have passed with a favorable recommendation to the City Commission. Do you know when the anticipated hearing date for the City Commission is?
Pardon?
Okay. Usually... Okay, forgive me. I'm going off script. Normally, for the record, if we have an anticipated date, we prefer... I prefer to announce it. But again, I defer to the board and to Mr. Vander Mullen.
I will go ahead and mention that the Town Commission will actually hold a workshop on this item on December 2nd.
Subject to scheduling, of course.
Yes. So there'll actually be two hearings. One is a workshop where they can informally discuss this, ask questions of the applicant, get a lot more detail. And then on December 11th, I believe, that will be... Both items will be heard formally by the Town Commission.
My apologies. Usually when it's anticipated. Thank you. So Mr....
We can continue on?
Mr. Chair, that takes care of everything under, I guess, item seven, again, I have the old agenda.
Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Much appreciated. You did a...
So it would be...
Good presentation.
Thank you very much, especially since my client's here. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, we defer to you for the remainder of the agenda.
All right. Any old business to discuss?
None.
Any new business?
None.
Okay, adjournment.
Meeting adjourned at 7:16. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.